All right, Mr. Littlefield says we are all good.
We're ready to go?
Yeah.
All right, this is the call meeting of the Policy Review Committee. There are three policies that you're going to be discussing today. One is the policy involving special meetings. The other involves special appearances before the school board. And then the third is a rewrite of the restraint and seclusion policy. So if we can start with the special meeting policy. And I provided you with several options for you to discuss and consider. And of course, if you have some other options, you can also mention those as well. Option one, first of all, just so that we'll all be mindful of what this is all about. As you know, there can be call meetings or special meetings of the school board. And right now, the way the policy reads is if two members of the school board request a call meeting, then there is a call meeting. So option one still has the two-member requirement. But in addition to that, the chair would have to give an agreement to holding a special meeting. That's option one. And I'm just going to run through all four of the options and then we can discuss them. Option two is where at least one member of the school board would request a special meeting. But there will also have to be the agreement of the chair in order to have that special meeting. Then the third is when there is a majority of the school board members requesting a special meeting or call meeting. And that would translate into at least four members of the school board. And then option four is special meetings would be called by the chair. So they are the four options that I've developed for you to consider. So I guess now whatever discussions you want to have concerning these options.
Mr. Waller, on the options one, two, and three, the chair would be involved. But option four is the only one where the chair would not be involved. Is that correct?
Well, option one, two, and four, the chair is involved.
Okay.
In one and two, it has to take place with concurrence of the chair. Option four, it's the chair's sole decision.
Right, because all four of the options look like they have the chair because even three says the chair or when requested by a majority of the board. And I would think that since, now my thinking was, Mrs. Byram, that since the meeting can only take place if you have a majority of the board, that option three would be the one that made sense. Because with the other options, the meeting couldn't take place unless the majority of the board was there. Am I correct? You'd have to have four people present. Is that correct, Mr. Waller?
Well, you would not be able to conduct any business unless you have...
Unless the majority of the board was there.
Right, you need the quorum.
So you'd have to have a quorum there in order to do it. So it would seem that if the meeting were called by the chair or when the majority of the board members were there, and I would assume that even if the majority of the board was there, the chair would need to be there in order to conduct the meeting. Is that correct?
Or the chair could designate someone to conduct the meeting.
So the chair would have to designate the co-chair, the vice chair, or someone else designated to chair the meeting?
Correct.
In the absence of those two, someone would have to be designated to chair the meeting. Right.
Correct.
So then it would still be the responsibility of the chair to designate somebody to be at the meeting to chair the meeting? Even if four other members decided to have a meeting, someone would have to be designated by the chair to be responsible for the meeting?
Correct.
Okay, so then to me, option three would be the option that would make more sense because the majority of the board would be there so the meeting could take place. And then the chair's involvement would be necessary as well. So you'd know you'd have the people there to have a business meeting to make a decision.
Another take on that could be to increase the number of board members that can call a special meeting to the three and also include the chair.
Right, right.
Have three board members plus the chair.
Okay.
So that will have to worry about having someone designated to chair the meeting because the chair would also have to be involved in calling it.
So would it be a good idea then to have, rather than say an option, one of the options, it would be three board members and the chair would be in agreement or the majority of the board and the chair?
Well, if you say the majority of the board and the chair, then you're...
I mean...
Then you're talking about five people. Whereas if you say at least three board members plus the chair.
Okay. So you're saying basically we could change option three to three board members and the chair?
Right, you could change it to three board members and the chair.
So, Ms. Byram?
I like that idea, three board members and the chair. Change in option three.
Okay. So we would say the chairman and three board members?
Right, you could say it that way.
Or we could change one of the other options to when at least three board members with the agreement of the chair, we could change option two to at least three board members with the agreement of the chairman instead of at least one?
You could certainly do it that way.
And then we wouldn't have to change the language except to say at least three board members with the agreement of the chairman?
Correct.
And like I said, the reason I'm saying that is because that would be necessary in order to have a quorum, to have the meeting. And then you would know at least you have enough people who would be interested in whatever topic we'd be discussing or whatever to make a decision in the meeting.
Okay. So is that the direction you want to go? You want to have this to be three board members with the agreement of the chairman?
Yes.
All right, what we can do then, if everyone is okay with this, at the December meeting, we can put this on for a first reading?
Okay.
Okay. The second policy pertains to public appearances. As you recall, at one of the most recent school board meetings where there was a great deal of public interest and public comments, there was a time issue because of the number of people that wanted to speak. And some of the people felt as though they were not allowed sufficient time to express their concerns to the board. Your current policy allows 30 minutes total for early appearances, regardless of how many people will appear. And so from that, you have to determine how much time you will give them so that it can all take place within that 30-minute window. And as a result of that, when you had a large number of people appearing before the school board, their time was somewhat short. It was reduced considerably because of the number of people. So what I've done is that I've asked before, I've given you several options from which you can discuss, consider, alter if you so choose. The first option is that whenever the number of public speakers exceeds six, and the reason that I'm using six is that normally under the policy, everyone would be given five minutes. And so if you have six speakers each given five minutes, you're at the 30-minute mark. So if you have more than six, when you need to start adjusting the time. So what I've put together here says that if the number of speakers exceeds six, the chair has granted the authority to extend the 30 minutes for early appearances to allow each citizen or organization five minutes to present their matters. So that's the first option. The second option is that again, you look at where you have more than six speakers. The 30 minutes for early appearances can be extended by vote of the majority of the school board to allow each speaker at least five minutes. And then the third option is where you have more than six speakers, the 30 minutes for early appearances can be extended by majority of the school board to allow each citizen a reasonable period of time to present matters, which then means that the board will have to determine how many minutes each person would get. So they are the three options on early appearances.
When I read this, I thought of two things. And I know that one of the things that we talked about earlier, just mentioned in passing, was sometimes we get letters from people that are read if we want to do those differently. Maybe we could exclude those, do them differently. That's something that Mrs. Byram and I sort of thought. But the other thing is that if we do that, what happens to the business of the board? Because if we take the time to vote, that's going to add time. If, you know, we find out that we have, say, 10 people who want to speak, and we stop when we find out, that's going to take more time. So it's going to add more time. If, for instance, we have, like for this December meeting, we often have schools that are performing, we have good news reports, we have people that are presenting to us. So all those people will have to stay and wait during the board meeting. We have to hold off the business of the board while we're waiting for people to present. Now, in the past, since we have two times for people to present in the meeting, I know at one of the meetings, what we did was allow people to present at the second time that we have set aside for public speakers. One of the issues that Mrs. Byram and I talked about was one of the complaints of some of the people. Do you want to share that, Ms. Byram? Do you want to share that, Ms. Byram?
Some people...
One of the complaints you heard.
Some people were...
Go ahead.
That, you know, they couldn't appear in the first early appearances and then they, of course, appear at late appearances. But I had a couple of little telephone calls that mentioned the fact they didn't feel like they got to present their beliefs or their attitudes about things during the regular meeting. Most people had already tuned out by that time. They had... So that's the only thing I was going to say. And late appearances, refresh my memory, Mr. Waller, is that regulated by time as well?
It is not. Late appearances are not regulated by time, at least not by your policy.
Right.
Now, you could, at late appearance time, set forth a time limit. But there is no time limit in your policy for late appearances.
Right.
So then if people wanted to or felt that they needed more time, then they could do late appearances. And that would be one of the things, one of the caveats maybe, that we could give people if they wanted them. But now some of the people, one of the complaints that we also heard was they felt that, you know, if we were going to vote on an issue, they wanted to speak before we got a chance to vote, not after we had voted on it. So they wanted to speak first, if it's something that we were going to vote on that day. So we were trying to think of ways that we could do it without making the meeting so long for the people, for our business portion of the meeting, to try to adjust the time. So we thought maybe if we could add to the time, if we could say, say, 45 minutes instead of 30 minutes, would that be an option that we could give? If we set forth a time that would be limited, rather than saying that we stop in the middle and that like if we had six people to come, or if we had nine people to come, and we'd say, okay, we'll do this for 45 minutes and then we'll have to stop. And we'll take them in order of when they signed up. And then everybody after that 45 minutes will have to go on to the late appearances. And then they can have the five-minute time period if they don't want to have their time shortened. But we did want to talk about it to see what your ideas were with regard to that. Do you think that that would be something that would be a fair way of dealing with this? Because we don't want to extend the beginning of the meeting so long that we disrupt the business portion of the meeting because we do have business to conduct in the meeting.
So under this, 30 minutes is allocated now. And then if we extended it 30 more minutes, that would be an hour. And then the late appearances could be another half an hour, correct, Mr. Waller?
Yeah, you know...
I mean, we could devote an hour and a half of our meeting on a hot topic issue. An hour and a half of the meeting would be devoted to public opinions coming in, yes.
One of the advantages that you do have with regard to early appearances is that they have to sign up in advance. So you know going into the meeting
Right.
how many people you're going to have speaking. With that in mind, you will be able to make a determination early on as to how much time each person should be allotted, keeping in mind the bulk of time that you have set aside for early appearances. So going back to what the vice chair just suggested about the 45 minutes, I think the 45 minutes would certainly work unless you have such a large number of people that have expressed an interest to speak that is going to exhaust the 45 minutes, at which time you're going to find yourself in the same position you're in now with 30 minutes. Because even under the 30-minute allocation, you know, if you said you're going to still let everybody speak for five minutes with 30 minutes. And so when you get to your six, after the sixth person speaks, assuming they use their full, everybody uses five minutes, you're going to have to cut it off. And then what you would do is you would give the people that did not speak at early appearance the option to speak at late appearance. So I think that with the 45-minute extension of time, you could potentially run into the same problem.
Mr. Waller, I'd like to clarify a question on what you just said there. So at that same meeting, when we get the people who didn't get an opportunity to finish, Ms. Byram gave them the option to go to late appearances. And looking at this policy, we don't have anything that prevents folks from speaking at both. Early appearances, you have to sign up beforehand. Late appearances, you can sign up all the way up until five o'clock that day, really when we're starting the closed session. Are we going to continue to allow people to speak at both if their time wasn't finished on the early appearances?
I think that's something that has to be decided on. I don't think that has ever really come up. And I do think it's probably worth having a discussion about whether or not you're going to allow people to speak twice. Or if someone starts and not able to finish, would you allow them to finish during the late appearance?
Is there a way for us to decide? I think it's something that we should decide. I think Dr. Gordon brought up a good point. I think if they want to speak at the late appearance, if they want to speak and they have more to say than what will be covered in five minutes, that I think it's only fair to have them choose the late appearance and allow someone else to speak who can speak within the boundaries and who doesn't have something that we're going to vote on that evening that they, you know, they feel they have to say that particular evening. If they can delay their point and speak longer at the end, I don't think it's fair for someone to speak twice and other people don't get a chance to speak at all, who may wish to speak in the five-minute period. But we may want to look at the time too to sign up because what we have set is the time for early appearances is what, 12 o'clock on Wednesday before the meeting? Is it 12 o'clock on Wednesday before the meeting or 12 o'clock on Wednesday, on Thursday?
I think it's Thursday, but I'll double check.
Yeah, I know it's at noon on one of the days, either the Wednesday before or that day. So whatever day it is, if we could find out what the number is and we know what the number is, maybe we can contact the speakers early enough. Because I think what happened that day, if we could contact people early enough to let them know that their time is going to be cut, it might be well to at least let people know that your time is going to be cut. Because I think one of the reasons, or at least I felt that, I don't know. But I felt that one of the reasons they were upset about it was because they didn't know their time was going to be cut until they were there in the room. Had they known they had to modify what they were going to talk about, at least if they had been given time to modify it before they got up to speak, it might have gone over much better than it did. You know, if we had told them that they had three minutes to speak instead of five minutes to speak when you get up there, and then all of a sudden you're trying to condense it in your head, it's hard to get your point across. So that might have gone over better. But whatever we decide to do, I think if we could get it out there so at least people know in advance what they have to do, they can be prepared to do it.
I agree with that.
I don't know, what are your thoughts, Mrs. Byram on that?
I think that was the problem with the concern of the citizens that they thought they were going to have five minutes when the gap was cut. Yes, maybe we should, if we have a lot of people signed up, we should notify them. The clerk should notify them that their time will be cut to three minutes or four minutes or something. Because when we get letters from the public, the letters are more concise and they get to the point very quickly and usually take just maybe a matter of minutes, two minutes maybe to read the letter. They realize they have to get their point across very quickly.
To answer your question, Dr. Buck, it's like we said, early appearances are on 12 noon by that Wednesday. Late appearances are about 5:00 PM the day of the board meeting. And so one of the things, based on what both of you just said, you have the option to either have the clerk call the day of the board meeting or the announcement can also be made at the beginning of the board meeting, which will also allow people some preparation time to see what they need to edit in their speeches and so forth.
Yeah, well, I'm thinking if we know the day before, if we could at least let them know, if we know at 12 o'clock that we've got 20 people that want to sign up, I think we need to let them know at least that evening or on Thursday morning that they need to edit their speeches. Because we don't let them know until they get there with what they have to say. Since we begin with that, they really don't have time to go through all of what they're going to say and then get up to say it. I mean, even though, you know, I speak and most of us speak publicly all the time, it's kind of difficult to sit there and go over all you're going to say and try to edit it in a few minutes to get up to speak. And then I think the other thing that we can do to reduce the time is if we have letters to read, have all our letters read at one time. Because we know that takes us about a minute or a minute and a half to go through each of our letters. So if we hold those until the end or do those at the beginning, whatever time we want to do those, we can hold those and read them at one point or the other. Because it takes us, it doesn't take us as long to go through those packets as it does for people to get up, come up, say what they have to say, introduce themselves and so on and so forth, and then say what they have to say. It takes more time to do that.
In fact, it may...
Are you, do you agree, Mr. Wall? What do you think about?
In fact, it may not be a bad idea.
I'm sorry.
It may not be a bad idea not to include the letter reading in the allotted time. So if you have 30 minutes set aside for early appearances, when letters are being read, they will not count against the 30 minutes.
Okay, okay.
That would be a good idea, I think, yeah. So the letters, after we...
Okay.
The public...
Okay.
Then the letters would be read.
Right, you could do it that way. After all of the early appearance, after that portion is concluded, then you would have reading of letters.
Right. So that would allocate the total 30 minutes to the speakers.
To the people that are present, right. Let me ask you this, because I do think there is something to be said about notifying people early enough in advance so they can make adjustments that they feel need to be made so they can still get their point across in the time that's been allotted for them. Would you want to consider, like right now, the policy says, you know, five minutes. Would you also want to have something that says that they will never be given less than a number? Like it will never exceed five, but it would never be less than whatever. Would you want to consider something like that?
Okay.
Well, that gives them a better idea to prepare.
I wouldn't... Yeah, I wouldn't have a problem with that. I wouldn't have a problem with that at all. I think that might make people feel more comfortable because they wouldn't feel like, I thought I had five and now you're telling me I've got to say it in two minutes. I've got to say what I plan to say in five minutes and two minutes. And I can't reduce it to that two minutes. I'm just trying to think of how we can do the business smoothly without, you know, holding up. If we have kids ready to sing for us and businesses ready to present to us and teachers ready to present and other people ready to present, and the meeting lasts so long that by the time we get to the children, they fall asleep in their seats, I'm just thinking along those lines. And we want to make sure that we give the public a chance to have input. But I think that's a good idea. But I think that's a good idea, Mr. Wall. If we said, you know, you have three to five minutes or four to five minutes or, or whatever, never be less than three minutes. It'll never be less than four minutes or whatever. I don't have a problem with that at all.
I, I think three to five minutes would be good, you know, have a range, like you said. Then the person will know, well, I might only have three minutes. I'd better, you know, have my comments very brief just in case there are a lot of people signed up, you know.
So what do we do about the, um, total amount of allotted time? Um, right now, it's thirty minutes for early appearances. Is the total allotted time, do we keep it at thirty minutes or do we, or do we change that as well?
Well, when I said forty-five, I was thinking it would never exceed forty-five minutes. Now, that was when I suggested it, when, when I was talking to Mrs. Barham about it, I was talking about the fact that it would never exceed forty-five minutes. That would be my recommendation for something for the board to vote on. They would never exceed forty-five minutes. And I was saying that because, as I said, we still have business, the business of the board that we have to accomplish during the time period. And I know about midnight, people are there, but they're not really there. And I want, I want our business to be accomplished as well. And, and if there are late speakers, I want people to be awake enough to listen to what they have to say as well.
Right, right. Well, you know, if you, if you increased it to forty-five minutes total and the, the minimum amount of time that any individual speaker would have would be three minutes, you could accommodate up to fifteen men, fifteen speakers within that forty-five minute time period.
That's what I was thinking. So if we, if we did that and say it would never be less than three minutes.
Mm-hmm. And then the total allotted time is forty-five, which means you can accommodate up to fifteen people at three. And then I guess if anyone, if it went beyond the forty-five minutes, then they could go to late appearances.
The late appearances, yeah.
But that brings up the question again. So if they're speaking and they go over, are we gonna allow them to go to late appearances? Like Dr. Buck was saying, that means they would get a chance to speak twice. Or are we, are we gonna say kind of what we've done?
No.
Go ahead, Dr. Buck.
I was gonna say, I don't think so. Now, that, that's, that's where I, I would say you have to make a choice. If, if three minutes is not enough time for you to make your point, then you have to decide that you wanna go on to late, to the late appearances. But if you choose to speak in the, in the early appearances, then once we've heard you, we've heard you.
So what, so when the clerk is then-
Because I don't think it's fair. The clerk will not call you again.
Right. And when the clerk is letting them-
Other people, because them are the, the late appearances are for people who wanna speak on other topics.
Right, they're generally on non-agenda topics.
Right.
Non-agenda topics, right.
I agree. I don't think that if you have spoken one time that you should be allowed to, you know, go to the next one, no.
So when, when the clerk has been alerting the speakers on Thursday morning that due to the volume of speakers, the time has been cut, that's when the clerk can give the option to the speakers of letting them know, if you do not think you can speak, let's say within that three-minute timeframe, that's when we can give them the option to go to late appearances because it's still within that window before twelve. Yes, okay.
Absolutely, yeah. And I, and I think we need to include that. We need to include that somehow in the policy so that people will know that if they have chosen to speak, uh, chosen the early appearance slot and if we have to amend it to do something, if they've chosen the early appearance slot, they will not be permitted to then come back and, and choose to speak later.
Okay. Now, in that it's a three to five-minute, uh, window for people to make their presentation, and let's say we do have more than the fifteen, will the clerk be automatically authorized to back it down to three minutes? Or how will that, how will the mechanics of that work?
Well, she'll, the clerk will be the, no, this was just my thinking, the clerk will be the one who will know how many. If she alerts us, she'll know how many on Wednesday, right? On Wednesday at noon, she'll know how many speakers. So she will, she will have notified folks. She'll be alerted on Wednesday because she will be the one who knows how many.
Okay.
Now, she can let, uh, the chair know how there are. So we can, we can let people know when they start and she can read that when she begins. She can, you know, when we read the notice about what you're supposed to say and how you're supposed to say it and whatever. We can also, uh, I guess we can add a statement or make a statement or just let the public know that people have been notified that there are, due to the number of speakers that we have today, everybody will be given the three-minute period if there are fifteen speakers or, or whatever. But we're gonna read, we're gonna read that or, or make people know that that is a part of the policy.
Okay. So will the-
But when Mrs. Barham speaks, she can, or-
So will the ma-
But the clerk is gonna let them know at twelve, uh, after, at- I'm sorry.
So the clerk-
Oh, you're gonna say this wrong.
Would contact the chair and say, we have X number of speakers that will exceed the forty-five minute allotted time. How much time do you want to give each speaker? And then the chair will communicate that to the clerk and then the clerk in turn will communicate that to the persons that have signed up to speak. Is, is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I would think, yeah.
We can just do the math.
Right, right. Okay. Because I'm, I'm thinking that maybe all of that needs to be laid out in this policy.
In the policy, yeah.
Right.
It states that the clerk will inform the people, et cetera, yes.
Okay. All right, I think, I think I understand what you want done. So we'll also draft something and we'll have this ready for first reading, um, next week as well. Uh, the last, um, the last policy, and this is quite involved, is the restraint and seclusion, uh, policy. Uh, VDOE, um, has adopted new guidelines or reg, I should say, regulation regarding, uh, restraint and seclusion. And that, that regulation will go into effect, um, in January. I think it's January the fifteenth. And so each school board, each local school board is to also adopt a policy that's consistent with the regulations, uh, adopted by VDOE. What I have done, I've put together a restraint and seclusion policy that in many respects, it mirrors the regulations of VDOE. I've, I've sent this down to, um, the special ed department. Um, I, I'm waiting to get some of their feedback, see if they have any, any concerns about any of the language in here. The one thing that you, that you could do, because this is quite lengthy, is that you could go ahead and put it on for a first reading. And then do your second reading in, um, January. And between the first reading this month, first reading in December, second reading in January, you will have gotten hopefully feedback from special education and you probably will also receive feedback from CAC. And, and I don't know if it would be a benefit to send a copy of this over to CAC and ask them to, to give some input, give some comments on it.
I think that's-
Yeah, just my thoughts.
Yeah.
Well, let me, let me ask you something. And I, I don't have a problem with that at all. I think they have a meeting coming up next week. I think that next week or this week, they might have an advisory committee meeting coming up. But anyway, uh, um, I think that would be a good idea. If this is coming from the state department, though, are there any changes, any substantive changes that, that could be made to it? Even if we sent it out for, for feedback from, from folk?
Yeah, I give, I give you one example. The, the regulations actually give local school boards some discretion as to whether or not you're gonna have seclusion. Whether seclusion is gonna be one of your options. So you, you could very well have a policy that only has restraint but no seclusion. So that's, that's one area where there is some flexibility.
Okay. However, if you have a situation where you have children who need to be secluded, if they are, they are in, uh, in distress and they need to be separated from the general population and you have people who are averse to seclusion, then I don't know that there's something that you can do to, I mean, you know, you can have a, a way of, of, of making people feel that you're giving them input, but you're not really giving them input because it may be a circumstance that, that requires that a child be secluded from the general population. If in a ca, if there is a case where the child is in such distress that they need to be separated from the population and there are those situations that do come up. So that was, that was my question, if, if, uh, if that does happen.
Yeah.
And it does happen with children who- So anyway, I'm, there are, are, you know, when I was reading it, I was looking at some of the stuff and I said, well, I'm glad we don't do that, though. We haven't done that in a while. So thank goodness for that. Does in-school suspension, timeout, detention? Disruption in the classroom?
Where, where are you looking?
I'm looking on, on, uh,
What a P?
At page, "Seclusion means the involuntary confinement of a student alone in a room or area from which the student is physically prevented from leaving, provided that no such room or space is locked." Term seclusion does not include, what it doesn't include. Now, I know that in, in with, with, uh, with cert, you know, I sent you some information about, uh, the fact that, oh, CSAT was looking at some of the, uh, we had, we had looked at some of the, some of the, uh, materials that we had for a couple of years looked at. Some OCR things that, that, uh, had been under review for years with regard to restraint and, and seclusion. There are some, uh, children who have severe emotional problems and when they looked at timeout rooms and those kinds of things, when, when children need to be physically restrained. Uh, I know there was a case in Virginia Beach. I don't know how it turned out, but I know the parent had, uh, had, uh, there was video of a principal who had to physically restrain the child, take him out of class, physically restrain him and somehow somebody had the video on television. Of course, the judge threw it out because the judge actually saw the child kicking and, and screaming and kicking the principal and everybody else who was trying to restrain the child and, and threw it out. But the parent was claiming that the child was abused and, and the adult that was being kicked and, and scratched and whatever was actually getting a, a lot of abuse, a lot of physical abuse while they, they were trying to calm the child down. They didn't do anything but, but bear hug the child and try to, try to hold the child down until they calmed down. But, but the child was in really severe distress. So I, I'm not sure of, I know I went to, uh, one of the, one of the legal updates at, um, at the School Boards Association and they were talking about it, I guess a couple of years ago, maybe three or four years ago. But, um, I don't know how that went. And I know those are extreme circumstances and they don't normally happen. But I know that we have had some incidences with children who have been in severe distress, who needed to be separated, uh, from the general population for a little while until they calmed down because they did have severe emotional problems and they needed to be separated from the population. And they needed to be, uh, physically restrained for a while until they could settle down because they did have, uh, severe disabilities. And once they calmed down, they were okay, but it took them a while to be calmed down. And then they had to be served in other, other, uh, settings because the, the normal school classroom, the regular school classroom wasn't the best setting for them at the time. So I didn't, I didn't know. But like I said, I, I think it's a good idea to get everyone's input. I just didn't know how far this went until I read over this. And I was looking at C. I don't see any page numbers, but I was looking at, at C, "Physical restraint and seclusion shall be discontinued as soon as the imminent risk of serious physical harm or injury to self and others presented by the emergency situation has dissipated."
Right.
Now, do we have, we have, uh, I know that as a part of my training, uh, I had to do, uh, uh, a class in physical restraints just because I, I worked with, I was supervisor of, of special education supervisor for children with, severe emotional, uh, disabilities. And so, um, I had to do a class in physical restraints. Do we have that kind of, of, of training here? I was in another state at the time.
Under this-
And I know we had it when I left Virginia.
Under this draft policy, it talks about the need for train- Under this draft policy, it talks about the need for training. And that's in nine dash twenty-six point ten. It lists the training requirement.
Mm-hmm. Right.
And I believe that this training.
And do?
Do.
Do we? I was asking. That's why I was wondering, do we offer, I was asking, do we offer that? Have we, I should have asked, have we offered that to our ED teachers? Or to our school personnel?
That's what we're in the process of doing. As Mr. Waller said, that's what goes into effect in January. We do know that we've had members of Dr. Rice's team and Ms. Whitley's team has mentored the training, trying to determine if we're going to use the train, the train, the model, or to bring an actual person in. That's something that is going to take some time, though, as you already know, to get through to all of our teachers to be able to do that, or our ED teachers to be able to do that specifically.
You'll do that, okay.
But that'll be a requirement for them.
Yes.
But it'll take a little while to get that accomplished. I think that's a good idea.
So I guess my question is, would you want to go ahead, put it out there for the first reading? Provide a copy of it over to CAC? And let it go on for first reading this month? And in between this month and January, hopefully, you'll start receiving some feedback, and you'll also have a chance to look at it more thoroughly. And then do the second reading at your meeting in January.
Yeah, that sounds good. And that'll give special ed department, Ms. Whitley and her staff ample opportunity to, right, to look over this, if they have any input or any suggestions.
Right, that's my thinking, that it would give them ample opportunities to do their own review and make their own comments.
We'll give them time. Okay. Do you think that would give them enough time, or, because it is rather extensive? Do you think we'll get feedback from, would it give the CAC enough time, and Ms. Whitley enough time for her team to look at it, for everybody to look at it and get it back to us? If you think so, that's fine.
Yeah, I definitely know it'll be plenty of time for Ms. Whitley's team, because Mr. Waller has already distributed this to them. We've just been waiting on the specific feedback. They had some other.
Okay.
They're working on for the DOE yesterday in the day. The CAC piece, I think it all depends on how many potential suggestions that they will have that will come out of that advisory committee will determine that. I believe you're right, I think they do have a meeting next week or the week after. I'm not sure if they'll have two meetings by the time that we meet again on January fourteenth, but I'm sure they will at least have one.
Yeah, that's the only thing I was wondering about, if that would give them enough time, because I think their meeting is next week. I'm not sure, but I think their meeting is next week, and if they just have it this, if we just give it to them, say, today or tomorrow, and they don't have it, they don't meet until next week, I don't know how much time that will give them to look at it and give us meaningful feedback for, from it. But if they feel they have enough time, then we could look at it after they look at it and look at their recommendation.
And what we can do, Dr. Buck, is we can make sure, Ms. Whitley always attends the CAC meetings. So based on the fact that her staff would have an opportunity to review, she can kind of walk them through it to see if there are any concerns and questions.
Okay.
The length of the document is mainly because a lot of the strike through, they have changed.
Right, right, right. Yeah, as long as they have time to look at it carefully and see what they think.
So we're going to do first reading in December, and then hopefully, we'll be ready in January.
And if for some reason you have not received all of their comments, or if they want additional time, when it comes up for second reading, you could always table it.
Okay.
And just move it back.
And do it February.
Move it in February.
Okay. Okay.
I've also given you, we had mentioned, you had mentioned that you wanted to have quarterly meetings. So I've also given you the quarterly meeting schedule. The first quarterly meeting will be January the fifth, at which time we'll start going through the book that has been issued, that has a number of policies, suggested policy changes in it. And so we'll look at tabs one through fourteen on January the fifth. April the sixth, we'll look at tabs fifteen through twenty-eight. January the sixth, we'll look at tabs twenty-nine through forty-one. And then on October the fifth, we'll look at tabs forty-two through fifty-seven.
Okay. And give me the, you said April fifteenth through twenty?
Twenty-eight.
Okay, and the next date is what?
July sixth.
July sixth, okay.
And it's tabs twenty-nine through forty-one.
Okay.
Then October fifth is tabs forty-two through fifty-seven.
Okay, all right. Got it?
All righty. I think that pretty much takes care of what we had called this meeting for today. So we'll be meeting again on the fifth of January.
Well, sir, we appreciate it.
All right.
All right. You have a blessed one.
Okay, take care.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wall.